Good afternoon. It is three P M and I'll call to order the Board of Directors' regular meeting study session for Thursday, November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. May I have a roll call, please?
Director Meyer Hoffman.
Here.
Director Duff.
Present.
Director Martin.
Here.
Vice President Griffith.
Present.
President Sewell.
Here.
Thank you. We have form.
Thank you. And seeing that all five directors are present, we'll skip item three. We'll also be skipping item four. We will do on Monday. Item five, rules of procedure, counselor?
Yes, according to the rules of procedure adopted by the board, all noticed meetings are conducted using Rosenberg's rules of order as a procedural guideline. Directors should refrain from responding directly to public comments at meetings of the board. The president of the board presides at all meetings and decides all points of order and procedure during the meetings. President is responsible for the maintenance of order and decorum at all board meetings. No person should be allowed to speak who has not first been recognized by the president. No member of the board should speak more than once upon any one subject until every other member of the board wishing to speak on the subject shall have been given an opportunity to speak. No board member shall interfere with the orderly progress of a board meeting, and the board president regulates the amount of time to be dedicated to a particular agenda item.
Thank you. Item six, public input. This is the opportunity for members of the public to address the board on matters within the board's jurisdiction. Please limit comments to three minutes or less. State law prohibits the board from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the agenda. Do we have any members of the public wishing to address the board today?
President Sewell, we do not.
Thank you. Item seven, human resources report. We'll do Monday.
We will do Monday, but I just wanted to let the board know on Monday, we will be doing a special celebration for Jeff Nuttler's thirty year anniversary, and we will be doing it here in the boardroom because we're going to have all the staff come in for cake and ice cream and things like that. So if you do come here early like we typically do, don't feel that you have to stay outside the room. Please come in and get situated. We'll just be finishing up. So just wanted to pass that along.
Great, thank you. Action items. Item eight, award of contract to Mission Consulting Services for professional engineering services to provide water system and wastewater system modeling, model maintenance, and on-call consulting services. It is recommended that the general manager be authorized to execute a contract with Mission Consulting Services for a not-to-exceed amount of seventy-five thousand dollars for professional engineering services to provide water system and wastewater system model maintenance and on-call consulting services. General Manager.
Thank you, President Sewell. Eric Weck, our engineering manager, will be giving a short presentation. Eric?
Yes, good afternoon, President Sewell and members of the board. If you just have a little bit of patience, I can bring this thing up. There we go. Can you see my PowerPoint?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So, let's see. Okay, so, good afternoon. Item eight of this afternoon's agenda pertains to awarding a contract with Mission Consulting Services to provide necessary professional consulting expertise to maintain the district's water and sewer system computer model, and also perform on-call consulting services to operate the models and perform what-if scenarios. This contract extends MCSS's current efforts in that presently MCSS Consulting is working with MSWD staff currently to finalize the water and sewer master plans, and also to formalize the district's capital improvement plan looking ahead into the future, as well as developing the new water and sewer computer model. Awarding this one-year contract will extend MCSS's efforts to have the water and sewer models maintained as new developments are constructed, like residential or commercial, and they will be reflected in the computer models as they will be continually updated, and this will provide a more accurate model for staff to use. MCSS was selected to provide consulting services to the district earlier this year to assist staff in completing the water and sewer master plans. And MSWD determined that based on the specialized experience that MCS has, and that MCS was part of the project team whose qualifications were evaluated previously, staff recommends, staff will recommend that the board award this contract extension to MCS Consulting on a time and material basis not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars. Staff will actively oversee the work and monitor the expenses, and the expenses are also included in the job numbers pertaining to the water and sewer master plans, as well as capital improvement projects. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Eric. Any questions from the board? Director Martin? Director Meyer? Director Duff?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weck, for your presentation. Couple of questions. When you're talking on-call consulting services, does that mean that they're going to be added to our list of on-call consultants whenever we have projects come up, or is it specifically only for the modeling?
It's specific only to modeling and as-needed requests that we get, such as when we receive a fire flow request from a developer or someone that wants to develop a piece of property. We'll call up Jennifer, that's her name, and she'll perform a computer analysis on what the fire flow will be, instead of having district staff go out there and actually perform the work themselves.
Okay, and so then some of the monies for these services are actually going to be recruited by development impact fees, correct?
Uh, yes, I believe, yes, I believe they will be reflected in the new long-range financial plan.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Vice President Griffith, any questions? And I have nothing further. Thank you very much, Eric. And I believe we had a member of the public join us. We can circle back. We just did our public comment a few minutes ago, but you just missed it. But if you have a public comment, we could take that now. Okay?
It has to be on the record.
Yes. Okay, and so this is the opportunity for members of the public to address the board on matters within the board's jurisdiction. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less, and state law prohibits the board from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the agenda today, but we will take in your comments and we can get you to the right person. Go on there.
Okay, well, my name is Carolyn Orton, a longtime resident here on Twelfth Street in Desert Hades Springs, and recently had a leak, was not informed in a timely way, and it definitely violated your mission by not informing me. And over eighty-one thousand gallons of our precious water, healing waters, went down through the sand to waste. And if that happens to other citizens, we won't have a precious resource if it just goes for naught. And I'm asking that there be more timely diligence in notifying your customers of these leaks. And I was under the impression I would be notified because I've had trouble with trespassers and two years ago. And since then, I thought I was going to be informed if there was a high usage, and especially in the summer. And so the leak occurred probably in August, maybe July, but it wasn't until I got my October statement that I saw the high usage of eighty-one, over eighty-one thousand gallons of water. And so I'm asking that there be more emphasis by customer service supervisor on the training of due diligence to inform the customers of a leak by some sort of email if they can't get through, because they did call me, and I caught it on the third, third ring, and I noticed it was from Mission Springs, but they had already hung up, I think, after the second ring, because no one was there, and nobody tried to reach me again or send me an email alert, which I think they should do to conserve and preserve the resources that are so valuable, especially in the desert, water. And that's what I am concerned about as a concerned citizen, about timely, especially in keeping with your mission, focus on preservation of the water resources, especially when there's a leak and it goes unnoticed until October, and maybe a hundred thousand gallons of water is wasted. See, and they do have this new portal that addresses leaks, but not everybody is on the portal, which is supposed to notify the customer of a leak and high usage. But what about all these other customers that are not in the portal of notification? There's going to be hundreds of thousands of gallons of water going down the drain. And so I, I feel that something must be done. Customer service has to do training about conservation and preservation of resources of water. And, and I like due consideration because they waited a whole week after I made an effort to do something about it, after I got my, my statement, and then they waited another twenty-four hours after I requested immediate attention to the problem. And the former team that was here, whose name I remember as being Jesus, he would be out taking care of turning off the water at the meter in maybe less than an hour. And the new team doesn't seem to be focused on that, and they waited twenty-four hours before turning it off. They didn't even come the next morning. They waited till the very end of the day, four-thirty, when they came out to turn off the water. And that would have saved maybe, you know, five hundred gallons of water just in twenty-four hours. So I just would, am requesting respectfully that more diligence be made to get in sync with your mission. Every drop counts. Because if you don't do it, who's going to do it? Okay?
Well, thank you, Carolyn, and your comments are definitely received. Unfortunately, because it's not on the agenda, we can't have a discussion, but either Danny or Marion can get all of your information, and we can talk at a later time and.
Somebody will contact me then?
If, if not right now.
Oh, good. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Thank you.
Moving on to item nine, acceptance of the water supply assessment and water supply verification for the first Palm Springs Commerce Center. It is recommended that the board accept and approve the water supply assessment and water supply verification for the first Palm Springs Commerce Center located in the city of Palm Springs. General Manager?
Thank you, President Sewell. Again, Eric Weck, our engineering manager, will provide a short presentation on this issue. Eric?
Thank you, General Manager Macy, and good afternoon, President Sewell and members of the board. Item nine of this afternoon's agenda pertains to accepting the water supply assessment and water supply verification for the first Palm Springs Commerce Center. To service and background where significant development projects are contemplated and in the preliminary entitlement process through the Land Use Agency, which in this case is the city of Palm Springs, WSA and WSV are required to be prepared pursuant to Senate Bill six-ten and Senate Bill two-two-one. This agenda item pertains to a proposed commerce center project located in the city of Palm Springs on the west side of North Indian Canyon Drive between Eighteenth Avenue and Nineteenth Avenue. The project will develop over one-hundred-and-one acres and will consist of two buildings. Building one will encompass over one and a half million square feet, and building two will encompass almost four-hundred-thousand square feet. So given the size and the square footage, this project is recognized as being under the guidelines of Senate Bill six-ten. What triggers the preparation of a water supply assessment and water supply verification report is the size of the development project, and given that the proposed development project is more than five hundred square feet, a WSA or water supply assessment is required. Based on the analysis and preparation of the WSA, the estimated water demand for this project will be approximately two-hundred-and-fifty-four acre feet per year. This demand falls within the currently available and projected water supplies, and MSWD has the capacity to serve the proposed project well into the future. Secondly, there are no district monies being spent on the preparation of this WSA for the Palm Springs Commerce Center project. The development team has provided a deposit with the district to cover the cost of staff time reviewing it and managing the entitlement process as it pertains to the district's needs. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Eric. Any questions from the board? Director Duff?
Thank you. Just a couple preliminarily, Eric. When they, when M, let's see, MS prepared this report, do you know where they obtained the information that was from the, sorry, having to flip to the initials, I just asked Brian what it was, the rural urban water, sorry?
Urban Water Management.
Urban Water Management. Do you know, did they get that information from?
That document is prepared by the water agencies here in the Coachella Valley, so that is specific to us, and all of our information is in that.
So here's where I'm a little concerned. It talks about, on page sixty-seven, it talks about the program descriptions of conservation, talks about how MSWD in two thousand and four had adopted a wastewater prevention ordinance, but then it says, implementation status, no specific information is available. I know that we're going to the schools, that we have education programs in the community, so I guess, and then again, it says the same thing when it says metering, that we maintain aggressive meter replacement programs, but then when it says, implementation status, it says no specific information is available to this rural urban water management plan. It seems to me that the rural urban water management plan hasn't been updated with our information, because then they would know that we are in fact doing these things, and here's where we've implemented it. Do you see my concern there?
Yes, I can, I'll follow up, and I'll have an answer for you on Monday.
Yeah, the public outreach. I just, I know, I was reading through it, just trying to get a clear understanding, and I'm like, wait a second, we, I know, because I've participated in some of these efforts that we do to, to, to do these conservation programs. So that was one thing I was concerned about. The other, General Manager Macy had, had already clarified for me, which was the irrigation, making sure that we had separate meters. But, but seeing where this site is, are we also ensuring that this developer is aware that they will need to bring sewer and water across Indian Canyon? And that's all going to be part of it. We're not going to have any issues with them knowing that right up front, that they're going to be responsible, and what that nearest point of connection is, right?
Yes.
Okay, because I don't want to have a conversation with this developer, or any developers down the path, saying that they didn't know that they were going to have to connect to our water and what it would entail, which would be going underneath Indian Canyon. So as long as that's clear to everyone involved, then I'm comfortable with that, with the exception of you getting clarification on those missing items on the report. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Director Duff. Vice President Griffith?
I have nothing now.
Director Martin?
Nope.
Director Meyer?
Yes, would you say it was two-hundred and, how many?
Two-hundred and fifty-four point five acre feet per year. That would be their demand.
That's an enormous amount of water, and when we say that we can handle that capacity, is that, I'm hoping that I'm correct in saying that you take into account for when we're fully built out, this, when this, or the city and the county area is fully built, built out with residents and other projects, that, that water will be available to them?
Yes, that is correct. That's, the WSA and WSV refer back to, I believe it was the water management plan that was just discussed a few minutes ago, and that goes into looking at the total water supply for the, for the, for the district.
Okay, thank you.
And I have nothing further. Thank you very much, Eric. Item ten, acceptance of the Nancy Wright Regional Wastewater Reclamation Facility Monitoring, Monitoring Wells Construction Project. It is recommended that the board accept the Nancy Wright Regional Wastewater Reclamation Facility Monitoring Wells Construction Project as complete and authorize the release of retention money held for Yellow Jacket Drilling Services LLC in the amount of ten thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars and seventy-five cents, thirty-five days after the filing of the notice of completion. General Manager?
Thank you, President Sewell. As you can tell, we have an engineering-heavy agenda today, so once again, I will introduce Eric Weck, our engineering manager, to give this presentation. Eric?
Yes, sir, thank you. Good afternoon, President Sewell and members of the board. Item ten of this afternoon's agenda pertains to the completion of the third and final monitoring well for the Nancy Wright Regional Wastewater Reclamation Facility, and staff is requesting that the board accept the project as complete and direct staff to rela, to release retention monies to the contractor in the amount of ten thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars and seventy-five cents, thirty-five days after the notice of completion has been filed with the county of Riverside. On January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, the Board of Directors awarded the construction project to Yellow Jacket Drilling Services to construct three monitoring wells. Two monitoring wells were constructed, but the final construction, but the final well construction was postponed because the state required the well to be relocated downstream, which required MSWD to secure an easement from a property owner. That easement was secured earlier this year, and payment was tendered to the property owner. The purpose of the monitoring wells, to be, the purpose of the monitoring wells to be installed was that the new regional reclamation facility was conditioned by the state to install three monitoring wells to monitor changes in groundwater quality down gradient of the new facility. Now, all work has been complete, and the contractor has demobilized from the site, and staff will recommend that the project be accepted by the board, and that the notice of completion will be filed with the county of Riverside. Following the standard thirty-five days after the notice of completion has been filed, the retention monies will be released back to the contractor. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Eric. Director Martin?
No.
Director Meyer?
No.
Director Duff? Director Griffith? And I have nothing further. Thank you, Eric. Item eleven, award of contract to Kenwood Energy for professional engineering services to provide construction management service for the power purchase agreement. It is recommended that the general manager be authorized to execute a contract with Kenwood Energy for a not-to-exceed amount of one hundred thousand five hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents for professional engineering services to provide construction management for the power purchase agreement with Trident Mission Springs LLC. General Manager?
Thank you, President Sewell. Operation, our Director of Operations, Danny Friend, will be giving this presentation. Danny?
Thank you, General Manager Macy. Good afternoon, President Sewell, members of the board. A couple of things I wanted to speak to before I get involved in, in the staff report. In front of you, you were handed a hard copy of the contract as well as a staff report, a revised staff report. When we posted this initially, we didn't have the contract ready, so that has been prepared and provided to you today, as well as the staff report amended showing that. This will also be reposted, or in this case, posted for Monday's meeting. This has been a long project for the district, and in October, as you recall, we, we brought the amendment to the PPA and the lease agreement to the board, and shortly after that, we have, we have been busy. With that, you would recall that Kenwood has been supporting MSWD in the development and contracting of performance design of the mission, of the MSWD solar power purchase project. What we're asking for today, approval of this item for a total of one hundred thousand five hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents, would have Kenwood Energy provide ongoing support services to the district throughout, through the end of construction, which is scheduled to be completed by the end of two thousand twenty-five. Support services include, but are limited to review of requests for information, or also known as RFI's, invoices, and change order requests. One of the things that Brian, I didn't know if you wanted me to speak on what we talked about earlier, about the Critical Services Center.
Yes, I was going to bring that up in.
No, then I'll wait. I'll go ahead and defer that to you.
Okay.
An attendance at weekly construction meetings, and then also onsite meetings as, as requested or required, as well as, as update meetings to the district. At the end of the scope of work, there is a company overview. It's been shared in the past. In this particular case, one of the things that, as Kenwood boasts, an impressive twenty-five-year track record in the industry, positioning themselves as seasoned consultants rather than mere contractor seeking opportunities. Their extensive experience and understanding of energy management and energy generation projects covers billing analysis, proposal documentation, document preparation, contract reviews, project management, and other related fields. Their expertise in third-party reviews ensures impartial and thorough analysis of our energy initiatives. So they've brought that to the table in the past, as they were previously retained, and this is one of the reasons why we want to bring them on board for the project management, was a construction management of this project as we go forward. Although it's not costing the district, it's all borne on Trident, the cost of the actual PPA, there is somebody that has to manage that component for the district, and that's what this contract is intended to do. One of the things that I will bring to the attention is that we could have brought the budget amendment, in this case, at this meeting, but what we wanted to do is review it and analyze it in, in the coming fiscal year. There's sufficient funds in that capital budget to, to cover the cost of this contract or the work that's contemplated up until the time that we can bring it back to them. That's all I have. I'll turn it over to General Manager Macy.
Just going to add that the only, when we start moving forward to Critical Service Center, once the city's review is complete, one of the things we talked about was adding solar to that project. They would help us with that as well. So when we know that effort and what it's going to take, we'll come to you as one item and adjust it appropriately for it to include the CSC. So that's why in the first staff report, you saw it was all zeros, that was incorrect. So we've, we've cleaned that up, and you'll see that for the Monday packet. So with that, Tim Holmes is available for any questions you may have on the project.
Director Duff?
No questions, other than good work. Thank you.
Vice President? Director Martin?
No.
Director Meyer? Nothing further. Thank you, Dan. Thank you. And thank you, Tim.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Moving on to discussion items. Item twelve, Critical Services Center and Administrative Building Update.
Thank you, President Sewell. I will allow Alvin Flores of RCA to give a quick presentation or update. Alvin?
Thank you, General Manager Macy. Good afternoon, President Sewell, members of the board and district staff. Last I presented was in September, shortly after we received planning approval. So immediately after planning approval, we submitted to the various city permitting departments, I believe, that exact same week. Since then, the city has completed their initial review and accepted the project as of maybe about mid-October, and after that, the official review from the various departments began. As of last week, we have received the fire review comments and building review comments. I also believe the Mission Springs Water District has completed their review and that the project is ready for permit on that side. So thanks to the MSW team for expediting that piece. Right now, we are currently waiting on Public Works comments, so that should be the last set of comments we're going to receive from the city. In the meantime, internally, we're completing our own QAQC, Quality Assurance and Quality Control Review, and will incorporate those comments along with any other comments that we're going to be receiving from the various city departments. And lastly, we're anticipating to receive all the comments, Public Works, specifically, maybe around early December, based on what we're seeing in terms of the timing and our discussions with the city. Everything seems to be turning around and around. Everything seems to be turning around in around about a three or four week um timeframe. Yeah, and then after we go through one final review with the MSW. Uh D team uh will be ready to resubmit to the city uh for approval uh early in the new year. So uh with that, if there's any questions.
Thank you, Alvin. Uh Director Martin? Director Mya? Director Duff?
Just one, um can you give us an example on some of the comments they had regarding the building?
Uh we're still reviewing the building ones. Those are the ones we just received. Um I can speak a little bit more to uh the fire review.
Okay.
Uh so that uh one of the items that they're asking for is regarding the fire flow uh from the street. So we're working with um General Manager Macy and his team on clarifying uh what that flow is. Uh there were other comments regarding the uh fire lane access to the street uh or from the street to the buildings. So we're going to work on clarifying those. And then um. I think those were probably the big comments that were received on their side. And again, we just received the um the building one, so we're still going through those right now, so I apologize for not having specifics there.
No worries. Maybe next time you update us, you can give us an idea um of of what their comments are. Thank you so much. Great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice President Griffin? Thank you very much, Alvin.
Thank you, Alvin.
Thank you very much.
Item thirteen, Groundwater Protection Program Update.
Uh we will give that on Monday.
And item fourteen, District Holiday Schedule?
Uh yes, thank you, President Sewell. Uh specifically, this item is just for a discussion right now. We'll be asking for uh basically a gay or nay, but. We're looking to for the December and January holiday schedule. We are looking to close the offices on Thursdays and Fridays after Christmas and New Year. So you're looking at the twenty sixth and twenty seventh and also the second and the third of the following week. Uh just as a reminder, we will be half-staffed as we are typically on Fridays, so with our nine eighty schedule. So with the holidays, uh staff coverage may be a little bit of an issue. Uh we haven't gotten all of our requests in, but that Friday may be a little bit of an issue because people want to take the time off to be with their families. Uh if staff chooses to come stay home, they will be required to take personal time, whether it be comp time or vacation, so we're not just giving it away. They'll have to actually take that time off. Uh if any staff would like to work those days, appropriate supervisors will of course be present. Uh just for other information purposes, DHS schools and the city will both be closed those entire two weeks, so it's not that. Everybody else isn't doing a similar thing. Uh we're just only asking for a limited office closure. Um as customary during the holidays, we will not be performing any shut-offs from December sixteenth uh until January sixth. So there shouldn't be any issues with people not having water during the holidays. We try to make sure that everybody does have water, whether it's payment plan or things of that nature, so we'll continue to do that. And regardless of vacation schedules, uh we will have standby and alternate standby staff available for any emergencies. So really just opening it up for discussion to see if the board um would approve something like that or a variation thereof.
I think it sounds reasonable, but any questions or comments from the board? Director Martin? Director Mya? Director Duff?
As long as the on-call people are still there and the phones are being answered if there's an emergency, I. I see no, Wednesdays make such a difficult holiday for everywhere.
We were struggling with.
So I, we get it.
Vice President?
I would have liked to have seen the paper, like, when are the holidays? Yeah, um.
I can put together.
Visual.
I can put together a quick visual, yeah. I'll do that for our Monday meeting, excuse me, our meeting on Monday.
Great. Thank you. Uh consent agenda, this month's consent agenda is six items, so I don't know if today makes sense to go through them one by one, just to kind of get an overview, at least the last four. Did anyone want to pull the minutes? Item fifteen. Did anyone want to pull register demands, item sixteen? Uh item seventeen is Resolution two thousand twenty four dash twenty eight, recommending approval of Skyborne Development Partial Assignment and Assumption Agreement. Do you want to give a?
Staff report? I I can, Eric is prepared to give a full staff report if there's a lot of questions. Uh this is somewhat routine when. When Horton went under, uh went bankrupt, somebody purchased it, Skyborne LLC. So they assumed all of the fee credits that were associated with this project. It's under contract, under agreement, it's with them. So when they sell it to someone like Lennar, in this particular case, there has to be an assignment of those costs or that fee credit to them, and that's what this document actually does.
Okay. Does anyone want to dig deeper into item seventeen? Okay. Item eighteen is acceptance of bill of sale for Skyborne Village Three Phase One Water and Sewer Infrastructure. Is this kind of?
Bill of sale is really an easy way of saying they're dedicating the water in the sewer to us for this particular phase. This one, as well as the next one, the same thing. The water and sewer have been inspected by the district. We've accepted it, and now it's just dedicating it to us. The formal title is Bill of Sale.
Any questions or comments on eighteen? Item nineteen, acceptance of bill of sale for Rancho del Sconzo Project Water and Sewer Infrastructure. Same thing.
Similar, yes.
Any questions? And item twenty, I guess we'll have a discussion, board compensation. It is recommended to consider board compensation for the following meetings. Uh National HCP Habitat Conservation Plan Coalition Annual Meeting, all board members. And that's December tenth through the twelfth, and I believe that was Director Duff was recommended by Sebag. Did anyone have any questions regarding that?
Yeah, I. This is just going to be for Amber to attend this or is it going to be open to all of them? Are you not going to attend?
I think open to all.
Okay. Uh where is this located? Does it be located in?
It's at the Riviera Palm Springs, and then on Wednesday, they're doing tours. You get to select which tour. One of them is to tour all of the Sebag sites in the valley, conservation.
Okay, so that's uh three days. Okay, right. Uh come in.
And I believe uh you gave us a handout at the last meeting. Um but if maybe that's something that we could have sent to the board again.
We were able to get some additional information on the 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 daily topics of the the meeting, so I'll forward that as well. I was able to get that today. So I'll forward that to you guys. There's, there's several that have to do with. The region's plan for conservation, and there's several talks about the Colorado River. And that's where it kind of piqued my interest for our board, um that Sebag was wanting. Representatives from various entities in the valley to show our concern and support for the endeavors and. That's why I wanted to share it. Thank you.
And do you know if that Sebag tour, do they have like a firm deadline or number of?
I I I don't know exactly. I know we're getting close, so probably by Monday, if you want to go, make sure we can get Dory on the phone to start securing it. Um but there were three different tours. That was the one I picked, so it's the one I'm remembering.
Oh, no, it's okay. Thank you. And then the second uh item for board compensation is NCI PI Holiday Luncheon and Awards. MSWD will receive an award for the NCI PI two thousand twenty four Award of Merit. And all board members would be, if we approved this, would be convinc- convincible. Um and this was out in Orange County, I believe?
Fullerton, yes.
And that's the last day of Aqua?
It's the last day of Aqua, so if you would attend both of them, I think the compensation would actually only be for one of the events.
Okay. And I was looking at Aqua's schedule and it looks like the meat and potatoes is that Wednesday and the last day Thursday.
It it looks like just the first morning session is probably the one that most people will attend and then after that. So it it will be tight getting there if we run into a lot of traffic, but it is an opportunity for us to go receive the Award of Merit.
Okay. All right. Any questions on that? Event? And no urgency to approve this today? We could do it?
No, we can do it Monday. Just wanting for feedback.
Thank you. Item twenty one, directors' reports. Did anyone want to give their report today? Monday?
Monday.
Item twenty two, general manager's report. We have the finance report and public affairs report.
We will do this all on Monday.
Okay. Zoom in. Item twenty three, District Council Comments. Thank you. And director comments and requests consist of general comments, requests for future agenda items, and requests for future meetings. Director Martin?
Nothing today, maybe on Monday.
Director Mya?
Um for the uh our workshop. And we can, I would, I would like to put on there for uh. Our policy for contractors being taught. Waterfett, yeah, waterfett and. Want to make it that easy? Water, yeah, waterfett.
Okay, and I believe uh next month is no workshop, so hopefully first of the year.
Correct, correct.
Uh Director Duff? And no closed session today?
No closed session today, but we will have a closed, two closed session items on Monday and it will be posted as such.
Right. Thank you. And with that, meeting is adjourned.